Good evening, folks. I'd like to welcome you here tonight to the pre-town meeting.
This is for you.
And thank everyone for coming tonight. Tonight's intention of tonight's meeting is to try to make it a little bit easier in the upcoming town meeting that we have on Saturday, the 12th that's coming up. And we'll try to get some of the questions answered tonight and get everybody's thoughts and directions that we're going to. It's a great honor to be asked to do this by the town administrator tonight and try to help and be involved in the town. So, thank you for asking myself as town moderator. And my name is Randy Jordan. If anybody wants to throw stones, feel free to. So, we have a fairly decent timeline that we're going to try to follow tonight, and that's part of my responsibility. And just so everyone knows what's on the agenda, I can read it down, so we kind of keep in line. We've got a welcome now. First thing is 7:05 to 7:20 is managed growth study summaries presentation from the general from Central Mass Regional Planning Committee. 7:25 to 7:40 past, present, and future snapshot of town finances in service. 7:40 to 8 o'clock is FY '19 department budget presentations. And so, breakdown within that, where we go first is Seth Knight as chief of the fire department EMS from 7:40 to 7:45, police from 7:45 to 7:50, Nick Monaco. 7:50 to 7:55 is DPW, Gary Keller superintendent. And at that time, there'll be any other additional town presentations that will follow. From 8 to 8:45 will be special and annual town meeting articles, review, and discussion. And from 8:45 to 9 o'clock is public comment, question, and answers. So, I hope to have you all out of here at 9 o'clock and everybody on their way home. So, at this time, I'd like to call Ron Barton up for his 15-minute presentation to finish by 7:20.
Thank you very much again. My name is Ron Barron with the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. I don't know that this is going to take the full 15 minutes, so hopefully there won't be a problem with me running early, we'll have to say. Some of this information that we're going to be going over is stuff that some of you might have seen before. I'm seeing some familiar faces from a presentation we gave back before the start of the year. But just for people who weren't able to come to that meeting, little overview of what we were doing. We were asked by the town around this time last year to do a project where we looked at a series of the impacts of growth from a series of subdivisions that had been approved over the years but had not yet been built. There was a lot of question about how many were out there, what was the extent, the impact that we're going to have if all of these got built. So, we had to do a little bit of research to figure out what those are going to be. And this phase was focused specifically on parcels that had been approved by the town over the years, going back to the first height of the housing boom, as far back in the early 2000s, that had been sitting there, but because of the market, nothing had been built. And we wanted to know if all these houses suddenly came online, what could happen? So, the first thing that we had to do is we had to figure out what the number of lots we were looking at actually was. There was a general sense that there had been a few hundred subdivisions, but we weren't entirely sure. So, we had to go through a few steps in order to identify this. The first step that we did was we looked at internally our own data. We get reports from the state about all of the assessments and all of the lots that we get as part of our GIS data set at CMRPC. We were able to look at that, identify some of the subdivisions that were clearly subdivisions but weren't necessarily listed as having houses on them. We took that information to the town. We worked with the town assessor. We worked with the planning board. We tried to identify what we had. And we came up with a number that was around 400. It was actually a little bit higher than that, but given the fact that we weren't able to, we didn't have the time to actually go through and look at every single subdivision plan that's still sitting there and find out what has been built and what hasn't. We wanted to get a ballpark estimate. We settled at around 400 because based on what we had, that seemed to be about a pretty conservative estimate. Now, this thing that we, these don't include a lot of things. These don't include approval-not-required lots. These are only subdivisions that have been identified as having been approved and, but not having had substantial houses built on them. This has changed since then. I know we've had, I've been working with the planning board for the past five or six months, and there's been a lot of building since then. So, this number may have changed since then, but this is a snapshot from around, probably about the fall of last year. So, what we wanted to try to do was trying to get a sense of what some of the impacts would be as far as new population. We wanted to see what that could do to finances. We wanted to see what that could do to cities, to town services. And so, we wanted to start by saying, okay, what kind of trends are we seeing in population? This graph represents the population from 1990 to 2015, plus these last bars over in the corner here are the ones that are, were the internal projections from CMRPC that we had done as part of traffic study. We do this every couple of years where we'll do population projections based on existing trends. And as you can see, the trends from the, that we came up with were very, very conservative. From 2020, we were seeing about, you know, we were estimating that you may have 7%, 8% growth, but when we actually look at the data, we're seeing that you had closer to 20% growth per decade over the last few decades. And when we looked at the 2016 annual report to see where you guys said you were versus where the American Community Survey, which is the US Census data, said you were, you were quite a bit higher. You were, the growth was actually quite a bit closer to that 20% than it was to the seven, 6%, 7% that the Census was estimating. So, we can definitely tell that the town is growing at a much faster rate than a lot of people have been predicting, and I, there's no evidence that it's going to slow down anytime soon. So, we wanted to see what would happen to that population numbers if we took those 400 units and they were all built at once. We had to make some assumptions. We assumed that every one of these, because they're in subdivisions, were going to be single-family homes. And so, we wanted to take a look and see what would be the impact on this. And we came up with a couple of different numbers. The first estimate we ran is we took the numbers from the American Community Survey from 2015, because that was the most recent we had at the time. They've since come up with the 2016 numbers, but, and we figured the population listed there was about 8,316, about little more than 3,000 households, and we came up with a number of about 2.6 people per household. And that seems like a fairly good number, but we wanted to see if we, because we knew these were subdivisions and because we knew that this was a specific type of single-family housing, we wanted to see if that was accurate, if that actually reflected what we would be seeing on the ground if all these subdivisions came up. And so, what we did is we took some of the town census data and we saw, and we got a couple of what we considered to be typical subdivisions. We got three different subdivisions that were about the same size and about the same layout as the ones that we knew were going to be coming online to see what their population per household would be. And we actually found that in those, the typical subdivision was actually 3.4 people per household. So, it's a much higher number than what we would be getting just from the census. And the difference there is because when we're looking at the townwide census, that's capturing every type of household, the whole universe of households. It's looking at people who live by themselves. It's looking at people who are empty nesters, not just the families, the type of families that tend to move into single-family subdivisions. And when we did this, we decided we were going to base the numbers. I don't know if anybody has a really good head for numbers. You may, if you were here and you have a really good memory, you may notice that some of these numbers are slightly different. That's because when we ended up doing the report, the 3.4 numbers seemed much more realistic compared to the growth rate that we've been seeing in town versus the 2.6 persons per household. So, we decided to go with that number throughout the entire report. So, that's the baseline we used for all the estimations that we have in here. So, the other thing we wanted to see is what would the impact on the taxes be? So, we wanted, we did two different numbers. The first one, we wanted to see how much taxation you could expect to get in, how much revenue you should expect to get from all of these houses if they should be built. And the second thing is we wanted to see if all those people moved in, we wanted to know what you would end up getting as far as additional revenue that you would get from all the different activity from these people in town. So, to get the tax yield, we figured the, we did, looked at the current assessed value. We looked at the median land value. We looked at the median value of the properties that were built on top of the land, and then came up with an estimate of how much value on average over the past few years the town has been seeing. Now, this isn't taking into account a lot of variation. This isn't looking at the, this isn't capturing the changes in home value. So, chances are, you would see probably a lot more going forward than you're seeing right now, because this is looking backwards, the average from here to, I apologize, I forget how far we looked back. I think we looked back 10 years. But again, so you're not necessarily, right now, home prices are going up, so you're probably going to see a little bit more value from that, but that's what we were estimating from the past performance. And what we estimated was, we came up with, based on the 1737 per thousand in home value, which was what was, we used the fiscal year '16 for that. So, that's not currently what, that's not what it is right now. That's what it was at the time that we were looking at it. And the estimate that we came up was about four, just under $5,000 in tax estimates per lot for 400 units, looking at a little more than almost 1.9 million dollars. So, and we wanted to see other revenues as well. So, what we ended up doing is we took the 400 units multiplied by the, by the 3.4 people per household to get a number of population, and then we looked at your past performance from the town annual reports to see what the budgets were based on the average population at the time, and determined a per-head cost of additional revenue. Now, of course, not everybody pays the same thing. They don't pay all the same fees, but we wanted to see per person what that would end up being, so that we could get a rough idea of how much additional revenue you can anticipate if your population goes up. And the total we ended up anticipating was an additional, about $2.6 million in additional revenue if you got the, about 1,300 new residents that would come in with all of these subdivisions. Now, we did the same thing with costs, and we took the same numbers. We took all the budgets from the town that were thrown out in the, that were recorded in the annual report, and we averaged them out over a span of time, compared that to the population in that same time period, and came up with a per-head, per-person multiplier. And based on that, we were looking at additional expenditures of about $2.8 million. And so, what we ended, we wanted to do is get a comparison of how the expenditures versus the revenue would end up looking if we ended up building all of these houses out at the exact same time, all of them were filled up, and what would be the ultimate comparison here. And what we did was we ran a cost, a revenues-to-cost index, and what this just is a very, is a comparison number that takes that expenditures number and the revenues number, compares them, and comes up with a number that if you had one, it would basically mean that you had, you were breaking even with all the new houses and all the new population. Above that, you're making more revenue. Below that, you're losing revenue. And what we came up when we ran this estimate was 1.95, which is a little bit below. You're basically having more expenditures than revenue by a very small fraction, though. So, you're about breaking even, you would estimate with margin for error and all the other things you would factor into that. It's important to know that, again, this isn't trying to model changes in value. This isn't trying to model additional revenue that may come in from different sources, from other state fees that may not be captured, may not be recorded in the annual reports from, from the past. But at the same time, it's also not taking into account, we didn't look at roads, we didn't look at the cost of sewers. So, all of these subdivisions are going to have new roads, they're going to have new sewers. These are all going to be new expenses, some of which is going to be captured in the budget for public works, but not all of it. So, it's definitely, there's a few, there's some revenue that's not being captured, but there's also a lot of expenditure that's not being captured in this. So, we're fairly confident that you're looking at right about either breaking even or losing money with those types of subdivisions all coming online at once. The other thing we wanted to look at is what other types of impacts we could look at. And we looked at water, and we looked at sewer, and we looked at the usage. What this represents is based on average use per person, per house, per household, what the draw was being recorded from in the annual reports, you would be looking at an additional 60,000 gallons per day of water being drawn, and then an additional 66,000 gallons per day of waste coming out. Again, if all of these houses were suddenly materialized at the same time, this is when you're at capacity, all 400 units are online. And then, the final thing we wanted to look at is what the new student ratio would be. We got this number by going to the, again, this came from the town census that we got. We looked at those sample subdivisions to see what the rate of minors per household is, and that number, and then when, the way they define minor is somebody who's not of voting age, so it has to be below 18 years old. So, and it was 1.27 per household. So, we were able to do an estimate, an estimate of how many new minors you would end up having, which would be about 500 people, give or take, for all of those, for all of the units that are still out there. Now, again, this is a, this is capturing the universe of people under 18. This isn't looking at people who are maybe homeschooled. This isn't thinking about elementary students. You know, we don't know how it breaks out by age. We just know that these would be the people under 18, because one of the things that this town census doesn't capture that detail of how old your kids are, what schools they're going to. You know, that's, that's stuff that we had access to. So, we're just looking at that whole universe of people, of people who would be old enough to be in school. So, we took this information, and we had a conversation with some people in the school district, and we wanted to know, what is your capacity without adding new facilities? And they told us, back-of-the-envelope calculation, they didn't have the specific numbers they could give us, but they told us, we could probably accommodate two to three more classrooms without having to look at building new buildings or shifting people or canceling programs. We could probably shift people around and free up two or three more classrooms throughout the system. Now, if we figure that that's about 20 to 40 children per class, I don't know many places that would be happy with a 40 to one student child, to teacher ratio. You're looking at a capacity of maybe up to 120 children. So, there's not a lot of capacity. You're really running into an issue where if you continue building at the rate you're building, there's a high probability there's going to be more facilities costs, there's going to be more additional costs to the schools, going to the school system than I think people are really anticipating. So, the one thing I wanted to put out is, again, there's a lot of limitations to this study. We didn't include municipal waste. We didn't include recycling. We didn't look at electrical usage. That's a big issue with a lot of towns. We didn't look necessarily at the impacts to first responders. We did look at some of the impacts on the police department, because we had a report where, I don't know if it was the current or prior police chief wrote a report that was talking about the current staffing levels per person. I mean, yeah, per capita. And we figured, we did a little estimate on that, and we figured you'd need at least two more full-time officers if you got the, the full population influx that you had here to keep at your current level, not to get to the level that other towns are. That was just the keep of the current staffing ratios. But we didn't get the opportunity to talk about the, the full-time fire staff. We didn't talk about, trying to think of what the other ones we did in the other town we did. Oh, we, we looked at response rates and things of that nature for, with other points. So, those are the things that we're planning on doing as part of the continuation of this So, what we have done right now is we've completed this estimate. We've written up a report. This has been delivered to the town. Margaret has copies of that.
It's on the town website.
It's on the town website. And what we are doing right now is we, we sought funding in October of last year. We got a grant, and we are working on a Phase Two for this. And the Phase Two is going to look at two things in particular. First is going to look at all of the areas of town that could be built but haven't been touched yet. So, we want to do a full build-out analysis for the town, and what that does is we look at everything that's in the universe of buildable land but hasn't been subdivided, hasn't been built upon, hasn't been touched yet. We want to see how much land is still available, and then we want to do the same process, but a more detailed version that will include things like sewer capacity, will look more at the water usage, will look at electricity, will look at other departments in more detail, and try to generate a report with the ultimate goal of seeing if there are any areas in the bylaw that we can do to manage this process a little bit more closely. It's a fair way of putting it. And we're going to be kicking that off very shortly, as a matter of fact. This is one of the first events for that. We're going to be trying to move forward that next month and really start in earnest the data process and begin the build-out analysis. And I'll be working closely with Margaret on that process and arranging for more meetings so everybody can be, can remain informed throughout that process and see what we're finding and make sure that we got a, a good, healthy amount of community input on this as we move forward.
Are there any questions for him at this time where he probably would not necessarily stay and listen to the remainder of this? Are there any questions? Please come up to us, Mike, and I guess state your name and address, like usual, you know, prepare for the town meeting.
Oh, come on. Michelle Van Reed, 230 Charnock Hill Road. So, you've addressed some things, and I noticed that you stated there are some things you didn't look at, like the water and sewer capacity, but also, are you looking at unmet needs, such as the need for a senior center and the need for recreation and stuff like that?
Well, there's going to be two pieces to this. The first piece is going to be the build-out analysis and the fiscal impact, and then a draft recommendations, which we are trying to get done by the end of this year. Starting in winter of next year, there's going to be a full public process, because part of this grant is trying to get a plan implemented and trying to get actual bylaws, recommendations that can be taken to town meeting, and that's going to involve a full public process. So, there are going to be opportunities to start to talk about unmet needs, and we can really address a lot of different issues at that point.
Thank you. Sherri Haver, 1 Olivia Lane. When you guys did the cost-to-revenue, did that include the increased percentage for the number of students in the schools?
We didn't try to do any projections for increased costs from that. We looked at it on a, just on a per-head basis, which I know is not a completely accurate estimate for how, how the school ends up being calculated. Part of it was, we, we did try to do an estimate that worked with the model that we had, but the school's formula for calculating the, I forget the word for it, but the baseline that the town has to pay is more complicated than we could shoehorn into this version.
But eventually, it will be.
Yes. We would like in this one to actually, we're probably going to have to do a separate piece just on the school so that we can have their own, that, it can be a standalone model with its own projections.
Okay.
And not necessarily incorporated with the other budgets.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions at this time? No, I would like to.
But Ron, with the governor bill that gets passed and the town accepts it, is that going to put a monkey wrench in your estimates?
Which bill are we?
Housing Choice. Housing Choice Initiative.
It shouldn't have really any effect on it, because the Housing Choice Initiative only makes available money to help mitigate some of the costs of building the, of building the housing at the rate that you're going. So, yes, it may end up reducing the liability on the town's part, because you might be able to, to bring in some additional money to offset what you're laying out in infrastructure and roads and sewers and all of that. But I don't think it would have any impact on the model itself.
Thank you. Are there any other questions at this time? I'd like to thank Ron for taking time out of your busy day to come tell us where we're going. At this time, we're going to start past, present, and future snapshot of town finances in service. At this time, I'd like to call Lyndon Nichols forward as finance chair to speak for four and a half minutes.
All right. Thank you, Randy. First off, I'd like to thank Margaret for putting this form together and hopefully getting people up to date on what's going on. But basically, this is year 11 for me. Same old, I could just use the script from last time and say we're cutting budgets, and that's typically what we do every year. Last year, FY '18, there was about a 3.5% increase over '17, which was a structural deficit of about $130,768. And of that, $150,000 were of free cash, which is a one-time funding. I'm sure Margaret will go into a little bit more depth in this. This is not a good practice to use, you know, one-time funding to fund our budgets. And we, and the use of cash reserves, over the past few years, we've been looking at an upward trend of about 8.5% of nonrecurring funds, such as free cash, being needed to, needs to be controlled. When we started the budget year back in January, we started to meet with departments. After receiving the apartment, the department's budgets, we asked for level services, and we had approximately $246,745,000 deficit based on those budgets. I know there was a lot of talk, and a lot of people said, oh, that's, you know, that's not that bad. We can absorb that, we can do that. But when you've cut budgets for 11 years to the departments, I don't think that's a fair assessment. Through a lot of work with Margaret and working with the finance committee, we've got it down to $133,414.16 deficit. That still is going to affect a lot of people's lives. That means, we're not, either, either way, we're not looking at cost of living, but we're not able to bring salaries up to what they should be. We're looking at other limitations and cuts to the budget, which all the departments will get into in their individual budgets. Looking at the FY '19 Wachusett budget, they were looking for a, they're looking for a $582,619, which is a 20% increase over the minimum contribution. As I said, we're looking at cutting budgets, and that's a significant increase in their budget. If we were to reduce that increase in the amount of $133,404, we're looking at, they're still having a 15.5% increase in that, that budget item. And the information that the school has provided to us regarding the House Cherry numbers, they're looking at possibly about $79,349 of net receipts that they didn't anticipate. So, that absorbed into the 133 is that much less of an impact on the school budget. When we met back with the school back in February 13th, we've always asked all departments to provide their budgets ahead of time so that the committee has a chance to review the budgets, so that we can make informed questions regarding their numbers. Unfortunately, those, those were not provided. They said that they would gratefully come back and that they would answer any questions, and they did come back two months later. We still had questions. One of the things that they had promised is they were gonna, as far as staffing, they were going to eliminate positions, and they were creating new positions, but they would not increase positions, which is not the fact at this point. Looks like they're still increasing, and they're not increasing teachers. They're increasing administrative people. So, this is a concern for us, and this is why we go back and forth. I know a lot of people will say that we don't support the schools, but to be a fair assessment would be that we don't support the police, the fire, the DPW, and our other departments, because they're the ones that are truly being cut. I was happy to see the teachers got their contract. They'll get their increases. They deserve it. I think they, they don't get the support that they really need either. I don't think that's the main problem with the school. And I'm glad that it came just before the budget, because that will make it a lot more easy to, to discuss at the town meeting. Other items, you know, I don't even need to just go into the school budget. My main concern is that we are cutting our departments. We've cut them for 11 years. This is my 11th year of doing it. I don't think it's fair that people are saying 249,000 is, is a number we can deal with. I think 249,000 would be appreciated to most of our departments. We're looking at, we already had to replace an ambulance, a cruiser, and now we're looking at replacing a football field. So, we're looking at three dead exclusions this year as well. So, I'll end that with, this is the 11th year, and we were asking departments to do more with less, and we were asking So we're looking at three debt exclusions this year as well. So I'll end that with, this is the 11th year, and we're asking departments to do more with less, and we are asking residents to pay more for less. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lyndon. At this time, is there anyone here from CIP? Do you plan to talk? Three and a half minutes for you.
Hi, I'm Joe Becker. I'm the vice chair of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. Thanks, Margaret, for allowing the opportunity for the various committees to come forward and say a few words about the work the committees have done this year. Just as a little refresher, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee is responsible for reviewing capital expenditures that cost in excess of $10,000 and have a lifespan of something greater than five years. So we're not looking at things like a police cruiser, for example, which typically has a lifespan of less than five years. We're not looking at PCs that have a cost of $1,100, $1,200. We're looking at those bigger items. For the fiscal year 2019 capital program, 11 items were submitted to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee to review. Of those 11, nine were considered to be complete, have complete information for consideration. And of those nine, six have been recommended by the Capital Planning Committee, and those amount to about $275,000 in cost. One thing of important note that we feel is, in prior years, there are still outstanding projects that the CIPC has recommended, but the town has not had the ability to fund yet. So there's three of those pending items out there at the cost of about, a total of $450,000. We are happy to see that at least one of those items is going to be up for approval this year, that being the ambulance. Since fiscal year 2012, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee has recommended, and the town has funded, about $2.7 million worth of projects. Now, I will say, there was one significant project in cost, which was the building of the construction of the water tank and the reconstruction of the existing water tank. That project alone was about $1.7 million. So about $1 million aside from the water tank is the value of those projects and items that the Capital Improvement Committee has recommended and the town has been able to fund since 2012. On a little bit of a negative side, since 2015, the CIPC is considered, but the town, but has not been able to recommend another $3.1 million worth of needs. So that kind of puts into perspective what we've been able to approve and recommend versus what's out there for need. And the other thing that's important to note is that one point, that $3.1 million worth of capital needs does not include large-scale projects such as buildings. You know, we need some work. You know, we've talked about a senior center. We've talked about improvements at the community center. We've talked about improvements at the regional dispatch center. So various needs are out there that aren't included in that $3.1 million that's already been looked at. So there's a lot of capital needs that we have building up, and we have financial constraints. So the town is doing the best it can with a large pile of needs, and we're trying to prioritize those, which is one of the main purposes of the CIPC in the first place, is to help prioritize those needs. There is a capital stabilization fund. If you look at the handout that was given out tonight about the allocation of free cash, you will see about a third of the way down, there's a capital stabilization fund line item. And in the last couple of years, we were pleased to see that the town administrator and the board of selectmen and the Finance Committee have all supported a 5% allocation of any given year's free cash to go into that capital stabilization fund. And the whole purpose of that is that when we get to those big, larger needs that we're able to recommend, we can apply some of this funding that gets saved up in this account to stabilize the tax rate, stabilize the impact that those expenses may have on the taxpayer in any given year. We've also been happy to see that there's been some allocation of annual free cash to go towards expenses, towards capital needs. You'll see this year that there's, free cash will be put towards roof replacements, for example, which is some things that we've recommended. And the other thing the Capital Improvement Committee strives to do is kind of monitor our debt flow. So, you know, we take on debt, that debt has a lifespan, and what we try to do is tailor our incoming debt needs with the outgoing debt. So as one project falls offline, the debt gets paid off, we try to time the recommendation of another project to pick up where that debt left off. And again, that serves two purposes. We're not adding more debt on top of debt. And in addition to that, it kind of stabilizes the rate for people. So if one debt falls off, we pick up another one in its place. It's kind of a stable. You know, people don't notice a big increase, or decrease for that matter, it's kind of even. So with that, I think I'll wrap it up. I'm probably beyond my three and a half, Randy, but I thought I had four and a half. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. At this time, I'd like to have Sheila, Board of Selectmen. I'm sorry, I was going to skip over that. I was trying to make up some time.
Thank you all again for coming. What a great turnout we're having. Hopefully, people are going to be able to watch this on TV as well. I want to focus a little bit on the whole idea of past, present, and future, and I will start, I guess with past, but it's also our present. We think, we probably should focus, at least for a minute or two, or a minute, based on my time, on the whole town versus school discussion. I should start by saying that we, as a town, need to acknowledge our responsibility and the part that we have played in some of our issues with funding the school budget. We were talking to the idea that new growth was a good thing, but the fact of the matter is that when new growth consists of a majority of four-bedroom houses, two-and-a-half-bath, great room over the garage, those houses are built for growing families. And as you heard from CMRPC, the amount of money that it costs to educate the students living in those houses is greater than the money that comes in from the tax dollars from those houses. It has put us at a disadvantage. It's something that we've had to play catch-up with, because, as you also saw from CMRPC, we have grown as a community exponentially in the past 25 years. 20% per decade is very difficult to sustain when you don't have a commercial base to rely on, a commercial base that's not sending students into your schools. It's a real concern. Now, the school should also acknowledge responsibility as well. The fact of the matter is, they need to provide us with greater transparency. We all know this. We beg for it every year. I hope we're going to see it at some point. They need to show a greater interest in the municipal side of the budgets. There is no one here tonight from the school district that I can see, and if I'm missing, you please raise your hand. So the fact is, we need to do something about this. And when we start pitting our town departments against the school, we've lost sight of a little bit of the bigger picture. The bigger picture has been made very clear to us this year by auditor Suzanne Baum's report that came out. The fact is that this never was fundamentally a fight between the schools and the town when it comes to a regional district. The state has not met its funding obligations, and it hasn't met its funding promises. That's not just transportation. You hear a lot about transportation, and that's moving through the school budget, through the statehouse budget process. But it's also the minimum local contributions and the foundation formula. If there was anything we can take from this tonight in terms of actions that we can do, the fact is that we are seeing movement because of advocacy, because people are calling, they are emailing, they are sending letters, not just to their own senators, not just to Ann Goby, who's been a wonderful advocate for us, or Kim Ferguson. She was already a sponsor of one of the transportation amendments for more money in the transportation budget. But to call the Ways and Means Committee as a whole, call the chairs, it is making a difference, especially in this year, which is an election year. And we need the state to acknowledge the fact that they are hamstringing us. They are assisting in putting us in a position where we sit there every year and try to have to make it out that it's this fight between the schools and the town, and it's not our fight. It shouldn't have ever been our fight. So I just wanted to focus on that at least for a minute. As far as, as far as more past goes, and I, I don't want to stand up here and have everyone think I'm looking at the world through rose-colored glasses, but like Lyndon, I've been doing this now for 11 years, and I can honestly say that this year, at least for me, and again, it's all relative, nothing is perfect. There are plenty of department heads that are going to go, come up after me and say there are far more things that they need. But this year, we are looking at a growth budget. For the past two years, at Fall Town Meeting, we have been playing catch-up. We haven't been getting it all done. To Joe's point, we still have a lot to do. Two years ago, we allocated $888,000 at Fall Town Meeting. That last year, it was almost a million. It's playing catch-up, and it's playing catch-up in part because we've put some things in place that have allowed us to professionalize, have allowed us to stabilize certain situations, and are getting us to the point where maybe we can address some of the big issues that the town still continues to face. If you look at your budget sheet, you'll see, now, and again, it's not perfect. 11 years of playing catch-up. After the dire straits we have been in, it's not going to happen overnight. But look at your budget sheets. Now, Bay Path, which we don't talk about very often, and they warned us about this, but Bay Path's increase is 13.4% this year. It's on the budget. The Wachusett District budget, it's 4.8. It's not great. It's been a lot worse. Our general government increase overall is 19.4. Lion's share of that, or at least a big chunk of it, is the town planner that we need desperately, and thank God it's still there. We have Margaret. We didn't have Margaret four years ago. Public safety is up 10.6. We have two new police officers online. We now have 24/7 ALS-level coverage that we didn't have when I started. The library is up 8.4%. How many years have we spent coming to these meetings where we talked about having to close the library and having to lay off every part-time police officer? So again, we're nowhere near what we need to be. Again, I don't want to give anybody the impression that things are perfectly rosy. But on the other hand, we're moving in the right direction, and I'm seeing it. So when I look at the long view, past, present, future, I think we need to focus on a few other things as well. I don't know if this is one of the sheets that you have, but if you look at where our stabilization fund has gone, it is healthier now than it was a decade ago. It will continue to get healthy, because Margaret won't have anything else. We have, we have other savings accounts that we've also been able to put money into. We started putting money into OPEB, which we didn't even consider five, six, seven years ago. We didn't have a CIPC when Joe Becker and I got elected to the board. The fact that we even have a CIPC now, that we have a list, that we have a plan, is a step in the right direction. The fact that we have Margaret, the fact that we're about to hire a planner, growing regional dispatch. And that's all in the midst of a residential community that has grown by 8,000 people since, what was the date? Yeah, I think he went back to 1990-something. When it comes to long-range planning, Joe touched on a couple of these things, clearly, and this has been a topic of conversation, I think, for a lot of people here, although it hasn't come up yet really formally, managed growth bylaw. It's something we need to start thinking about again. It's come up before. Closing of the sewer district. The availability of our public water and what we need to do to focus on that. And then, the one thing that Joe touched on, that I'm sort of hoping to come away from this in terms of long-range planning, and it's too bad Nancy's walking out, is the senior center. At least for me, I am certainly hoping that as a group, and a lot of us are represented here, the senior center really should be the next thing on our list, to Joe's point of keeping up with debt. And when we know that in 2021, we have a large portion of debt coming off of our levy, that's the timeframe. It's time to start planning. It's time to start doing projections of where our senior population is going to be, where we think the building should be, what it should look like, and how it should be designed, and have us get ready so that when 2021 comes, we're prepared to move forward with it. So it's hard, you know, sometimes you talk about these things, and you walk away with sort of nothing other than words and ideas. I'm sort of hoping you'll come away with this tonight with a couple of things, at least for me. One of which is, again, please advocate at the state level, because every little bit that happens to that state-level budget in the next few weeks is going to help our bottom line. There's absolutely no question, and there is movement. Move by $2 million already, and that will absolutely affect us. And the second thing, as far as our long-range planning, and please, you know, ask me later, I'm hoping we can all coalesce around the senior center being our next big project.
Thank you, Sheila. At this time, I'd like the town treasurer and collector to come up for two and a half minutes now.
So what I am charged with doing today is to just kind of give a snapshot, kind of perfect segue from what Joe said and what Sheila touched on, of our debt, the current debt that's on the books. This is a 10-year debt analysis. It shows excluded debt, non-excluded debt, and the enterprise debt that are currently on the books. This also includes the new excluded debt that we're proposing for this upcoming year for the ambulance and cruiser. You can see, we did, there's a big switch in 2017 between excluded and non-excluded. That was when we did the vote to exclude the school debt. This shows the trend of, things are being paid off, just like Joe said. It's, you know, we're at a point where we can possibly take on more debt to fund some of the bigger projects that are coming, that are out there, to improve our facilities here. This next slide actually shows a, the debt as a percentage of our annual budget. A couple of years ago, the town voted, like between, with the Finance Committee and Select Board and CIPC, we set some guidelines and established some financial policies. One of the policies was to our debt limitations. We want to maintain a debt level of about 5% of our annual budget. This slide actually shows the general fund, this is a percentage of the debt to our annual budget. I estimated a 3% increase to our annual budget. You can see, in 2021, we're just about at that 5% level. In 2022 is when we start dipping below that level, and that's where, where we want to stay at that, well, there's a, the financial policies would like us to stay at that 5% level. So that's where the opportunity will be for more debt to be taken on, some of the bigger projects, like a senior center or improvements to the buildings and facilities that we have here. We have the potential to do that. So, that's it.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will have the town administrator come forward, and you have a minute and a half.
I'll be quick. If anybody remembers the last budget forum, I had to rush during that, too. So I'm basically just going to echo what Lyndon and Sheila and Joe and Becky have already gone over. We start our budget process in November every year. So literally, this budget process has been going on for six months. It's a six-month-long process, and then if we don't have things squared away in May, it continues for further, for further time. Back in, as Lyndon mentioned earlier, back in November, when we put out the budget memo, the budget narrative noted that there was going to be a structural deficit of at least $130,000 this year because of the use of one-time cash reserves last year. And that structural deficit now, based on the use of free cash and other one-time revenues for this year, is at $174,075.87. So the structural deficit has grown. And this is, this is a word of caution. When we take a look at our free cash use guidelines, it speaks to all one-time cash reserves. So pulling from balances and other funds and things like that, that's only, that's only good for one year. Looking at overlay surplus, I mean, that's not really a recurring revenue source unless there happens to be significant excess year after year. And I know Diane could speak to the fact that there's not. It takes a number of years to build up overlay surplus. So I wanted to touch on that. And also, on the current year budget, you'll probably hear a little more of this later as, as we really get into the meat and potatoes of the FY '19 budget. But Sheila mentioned the planner. There are two major new initiatives on our, on the Finance Committee's recommended budget this year. It's a planner, a town planner, a professional planner, who can provide much-needed assistance to our planning board. And there's also a, what we call a streamlined permitting software, that will automate the process, a checks and balances process, between all reviews for permits and projects, project approvals. This is much needed, because there are several departments and town officials that are involved in reviewing project applications before final approval, by the planning board or by the building commissioner, et cetera. So those are two very important initiatives with all the development going on. The other thing that's in the recommended budget, and unfortunately, does not appear in the contingent reduced budget, are wage equity adjustments, or wage corrections, to a number of non-union positions who have fallen, many of them have fallen significantly behind comparables from other towns. There's a total of $46,000 that's in the recommended budget, not only for the wage equity adjustments or wage corrections, but also for badly needed additional hours for some positions. We have staff in the inspections Services Office- We have staff in the Inspection Services Office. It's a part-time office that is already dealing with probably 20 building permits, as it is just in late winter, and they never used to deal with building permits. So their work, their workload's going to escalate dramatically over the next year. So I just wanted to note those two things before I move on. The first slide I have here is just kind of a snapshot of our projected revenues for FY19. This is standard. Our revenues come from basically three areas. Obviously, the tax levy. That levy includes all excluded debt, so that total amount represents the tax levy based on the 2.5% increase, so the total amount that can be taxed, plus the total value of debt exclusions. That's $16,258,947.66, or a little over 75% of total new, total revenues to our operating budget. The next is state aid. And as Sheila mentioned, there's some promising news coming from the state. You'll hear a little more about this. So state aid, it happens to be an election year, which might be benefiting us as well. But the House budget has increased the projected state aid, as Lyndon mentioned, to the schools by over $79,000, which is significant, given our budget gap. So state aid amounts to a little over $5 million, or 24% of our total revenues to fund our operating budget. And finally, free cash and other one-time revenues. Again, that's a little over $174,000 this year, and that will represent a baseline structural deficit going into next year because it's one-time revenues. It's not revenues that are regenerated. Anybody have any questions on revenues? Okay. The next slide I have here, I call this my fish slide. This is actually, this represents the share that Wachusett School District Assessments represent to our total operating budget versus the share of all other departments. So back in '09, to the left-hand side of the screen, you'll see that it was about a 50/50% split, Wachusett and all the remaining town departments. That has, that grew over the next several years, shrunk a little bit. It was, it was kind of a little more equitable in FY15, and since then, it's grown dramatically. So what this, what this in essence means, and this is no fault of the school district, this is just what the numbers represent. What this means is that with an increased share by Wachusett Regional School District and a decreased share for all remaining town departments, town departments' budgets and services are being gradually eroded. And that's not someplace that we want to stay. We'd like to see this balanced out in order to sustain municipal services. Any questions on that? Okay. So the next slide I have here is really addressing the FY19 recommended budget, FINCOM's recommended budget, and the contingent reduced budget should the full amount over minimum, over minimum contribution by the school district be passed. Now you'll see the lion's share is with the Wachusett School Assessments. And again, no fault to the school, I'm not calling out the school on this, but what I do want to point out are those percentages. In the recommended budget, the school district's percent is 55 point, gosh, I can't even see, 55.51%, and in the contingent reduced budget, their share is exactly 56%. The difference between the two is only .49%, but that .49%, and I've talked to the district administrators about that, that .49% represents that $133,400-something-dollar gap that we're seeing in our budget. So every fraction of a percent is significant. So understanding that there is potentially some additional state aid to the school district this year when we're heading into town meeting, it's something to think long and hard about. Do we want to just put everything on pause and say, okay, let's see what the state numbers come in at? Because any additional state aid to the district or the town is going to benefit us significantly. It's going to help mitigate budget reductions. It's going to help mitigate additional use of one-time cash reserves, and it's going to benefit, it's going to benefit our town services overall. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay. Sure.
I'm sorry. One question.
Sure.
He carried the term contingent. What is a contingent upon?
Okay, contingent upon, this is if, it's Article VII, the, this, I think it's Article VII, which is the school's operating assessment. If the school's requested operating assessment passes, then that would reduce the municipal budgets in Article VIII.
Okay. So the town's already giving a low and number on the...
That's correct. That's correct. Yeah, you could speak to that if you'd like. That's, that's what, that's what contingent means in this particular case. The next I have a slide, and you don't have to read through the entire thing, but Sheila, Lyndon, they both mentioned a process or guidelines that we've put in place to try to manage our finance and provide some stability and mitigate spikes in use of one-time cash reserves and things, and actually start programmatically funding special stabilization funds, the capital stabilization fund, the general stabilization fund, OPEB. And what's as important is leaving a free cash base at the end of each year to generate to the following year's free cash, certified free cash. The reason for that is, we can't guarantee, the bottom of that screen, you'll see what free cash was certified at over the last many years, 10, 11 years, 12 years? And we can't guarantee that next year's free cash is going to come in at $927,000 or $888,000. If for some reason we don't see, if we don't see unexpended appropriations turned over to free cash, and the way we're whittling down our operating budget appropriations, we're less and less likely to see that roll over. If we don't see that, if we don't see, if we don't see one-time revenues come in from, say, grant reimbursements, FEMA reimbursements, which the town has seen in the past, that's not going to generate to our free cash. If we don't see significant local receipts over what we've projected, we won't see tremendous amounts of certified free cash. And we have really, you can ask our finance team, the Finance Committee, we have, we are very, very carefully and conservatively projecting local receipts, but we're coming close. We're coming a little, a little closer than what, than what I think we should be, we should be comfortable with. So we shouldn't be seeing a whole lot of estimated local receipts, or a whole lot of actual local receipts coming in over, over our estimates. It's not possible to really know what certified free cash is going to come in at next year, but it has to be divided up among all, among all these, all these sources. So the less certified free cash we have, the less we can, we can divvy it up and put it into places where we really need it. And that's all I have right now. Let me clean up.
All right. At this time, we're going to move right into the FY Department Budget Presentations. Seth Knight, you have negative seven minutes now.
Again, my name is Seth Knight. I'm Fire Chief for your town. Going into tonight, we did some little, gathered some information to try to give you a little oversight of what the Fire Department consists of and what our responsibilities are. The organization of the Fire Department, we split it up into three divisions. We have a Fire Service Division that's responsible for planning all fire suppression, fire prevention needs, fire education in our school systems, and handling all emergency calls as they come in. We are an all-hazard emergency response division, handling anything from fire calls to hazardous materials to natural disaster events. Second Division is our EMS Division. This Division is responsible for planning of delivering of emergency medical services to the community, not only in response as far as ambulance to the community, both at the basic and the paramedic level, but also in training, community CPR, and education to the schools and residents of the community. Finally, we have, we're in charge of the emergency management of the town. We're responsible for creating and managing the town's emergency management plan. That gets reported to MEMA every five years, as well as working alongside other state agencies and federal agencies in case of a natural disaster or anything that may happen within the community. Our staffing, our full-time staff, myself, we have one full-time captain, two full-time fire lieutenants, and four full-time firefighter paramedics. We staff the fire station 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with two full-time people on, seven days a week, with myself and one fire inspector during the day, Monday through Friday. So during the daytime hours, Monday through Friday, there are four of us during the day to handle calls, and this is primarily due to our call, part-time staff work out of town. We don't have the availability of staffing additional people during the day. Our call, our part-time staffing, we have two deputy fire chiefs, we have one fire captain, one fire lieutenant, and 36 firefighter EMS personnel. Again, these are all part-time personnel that respond as needed. This slide gives you a history from FY13 through projection of FY19. The red ones, the tall ones here, that's the operating budget for the Fire Department. The black lines is ambulance revenue. As you know, as we operate two ambulances within the town, we obviously use a third-party ambulance billing company. We generate revenue to offset not only the department needs, but town services as well. This money goes into the general fund. The line that you see, the graph on the line, that's our call volume. So as the town, as we've seen tonight, as the town's growing in population, the demand for services have rapidly increased. If you look back in 2013, you can see our budget was just above our call volume, statistic-wise. And as you can see, our volume of calls are increasing faster than our budget is. So what are our budget challenges for FY19? We've had some significant issues in FY18 as well. Our biggest issue is higher vehicle maintenance costs. Over the last 20 years, our apparatus fleet within the Fire Department, the town has committed $2.5 million into apparatus over the last 20 years. This consists of two engines, one ladder, one tanker, two ambulances, two brush support vehicles, a command car, a Polaris Ranger, UTV, and a rescue boat. FY18 budget, we've budgeted $11,750 for vehicle maintenance. As of this week, we spent just over $23,000 in vehicle maintenance. How we've offset that is through some transfers from wages into expense line items this year to cover some of the costs. Over the last several years, we've been pushing very hard to emphasize the need for a true vehicle maintenance program within the Fire Department. You've entrusted on us an asset that we're trying to properly maintain and to make it last 20 to 30 years. So we're working very hard on that. So that's one of our budget challenges this year. If the budget goes to contingent budget, some of these areas will be cut as well. Supplies. Obviously, as we do increase the call volume, we go on a medical call, we use medical supplies, medications, all of these things, ancillary supplies, they cost money. And as our call volume continues to increase, we're spending more money in these areas. Training. Our call staff, our full-time staff, we do training three nights a month. We do as much as we can with the good weather. We're outside training. We're doing practical evolutions. We did a live-fire training here on Main Street back last September. A lot of this stuff is mandated by the state as far as certain hours that we need to get. And we're trying to get the wage account to the point where we can properly pay everyone consistently throughout the year. What usually happens is as the year goes on, as training money dwindles out, we continue to train, and people are doing it unpaid. Equipment replacement, we do have some seed money for replacement program for new turnout gear and such, but we're trying to get that to a point where we can buy five or six sets of turnout gear each year. As you can see, we have almost 40 firefighters, and that turnout gear needs to be replaced every seven to 10 years. So to try to get on a five-gear cycle every year would be an ideal situation. That way, we wouldn't have to come back for free cash for large articles to replace that. We have various other items, hose, nozzles, things that need to be replaced as well. That's become very difficult. Our capital equipment needs for FY19, there is a ballot question, number one, for a debt exclusion to exempt from 2.5 for the purchase of a new ambulance. This ambulance will be replacing our 2008 ambulance. It's our secondary ambulance. Currently, we have two ambulances. We have a 2008 and a 2013. They rotate on a five-year cycle. So every five years, the primary ambulance at five years old becomes a secondary. As that continues to age for five years, at 10 years old, it gets traded in and replaced. So every five years, as Becky had alluded, as a debt exclusion, as we're paying the debt off, the payment comes off, we're trying to replace that car payment and continuing it out to try to keep the tax rate flat. There's one or two years that will overlap, and then you'll see the drop. Just to give you a comparison to other towns, as far as other Fire Department budgets in the Wachusett District, Olent spends $2.2 million for fire and EMS services. Rutland, we're just over, actually just under $800,000 for FY18. Sterling is $1.2 million, and they do not have 24-hour coverage. Paxton is just over a million, and Princeton is just under 500. How does that really break out per capita? Out of all five towns in the Wachusett District, Rutland pays the less per capita for fire and EMS services, less than Princeton. So just to try to put that in perspective. We have a great staff. We do the best we can with what we have. We're just trying to continue to keep pace with the growth of the community and continue to maintain the apparatus and equipment that you have given us over the years. So that's all I got.
At this time, Chief Nick Monaco for the Police Department, please.
I'm sorry, I don't have a PowerPoint like that. No. No, I couldn't. But if I did, it would echo a lot of the things that Seth just told you. My graph would be very similar as far as the correlation between population growth and calls for service and crimes. We're very fortunate, at the Fall Special Town Meeting, we were authorized to hire two new full-time officers, and that has done wonders at bringing up our staffing levels. We're currently at 1.5 police officers per thousand. Still, it's still under the national average of two officers per thousand, but we're doing a lot better. And with, with that much staff, I'm able to staff the Police Department with at least two police officers every shift, 24/7, where just, just a year ago, we were still running one-officer shifts. And that's, that's no longer happening, and we're going to continue it like that. So as far as wages goes, we're comfortable. We're not in the ideal situation, but, but we're doing okay. Another challenging area for me is also vehicle maintenance. Finance Committee can attest that I had to come to you for about $13,000 to repair two cruiser motors, and we need to get on a cruiser replacement schedule, and we need the help to do that. Like Mr. Becker said, a cruiser's not expected to last past five years. However, I'm running a seven-year-old car, a five-year-old car, and I got another one that's going to hit five years pretty soon. So as far as my budget challenges, it's, like I said, cruiser maintenance and also just supplies and purchase services in general. That's, everything in here is bare bones. It's just to cover the basic necessities of what we need, and it's, it kind of lacks the money to be able to purchase new equipment, new flashlights, new gear, just updated things. So hopefully, we'll get to that point someday. Does anybody have any questions for me on? That's all I got for right now.
Thank you, Nick. At this time, DPW Superintendent Gary Kelleher, please.
This is cutting into your time.
I walk, take my time. I say thank you to everybody. My time is up. But I would like to thank everybody.
This is an important aspect of our budget, budget cycle. Seems like we just did this yesterday. Where's Margaret? Oh, there she is. But it was last year. And to Lyndon's point, Mr. Becker's point, Board of Selectmen, everyone that spoke, my fellow department heads, you're absolutely right. In the last 10 years, the DPW, anyway, has realized an 11% decrease in budgets submitted. We've, the first thing I, that happened when I came to town was my staff was reduced by four people. And right now, I'm down four people. four people, and right now, I'm down four people, not including those four people. And my dilemma is that I, first of all, don't have the money to advertise for the positions, and secondly, I have to worry about next year's budget, and I say that because my main concern right now is FY18's budget. The snow and ice deficit doubled, so we're about $150,000 over in snow and ice, and it's, what happens is, and I fully admit it, that I try to be very frugal and I hoard my line items, I think everybody knows that. People call and scream because I can't take care of gravel roads, I can't do regular road maintenance, and that's because all of my line items have to help in making up the snow and ice deficit every year. So when it comes to reconstruction season, which is now, I can't spend the money, and that's FY18. I've already met for FY19, obviously, with Margaret recently, and out of FY19, another $10,000 before we even submit, and I certainly don't knock FinCom, I appreciate FinCom and the help and the pain we go through. I'm glad the fellow department heads, fire and police, I'm glad they're staffed fully, I'm glad they have their new stuff, but I am always gloom and doom because your maintenance keepers of the town don't have that same luxury. I do applaud public safety, and you guys know that because it has to be done. We're the maintenance people of the world, we have to try to keep the town fixed. Chief Monaco said about his car is a five-year cycle, and that's good, and public safety, mine is 10 years old and has 196,000 miles on it, and it has to be regularly maintained, and it is, and yours are as well, we all work together to get this job done. My concern here is, again, right now, FY18, and then we can begin and go through the process of FY19, but I want everybody to know that it's not hitting the district against the municipal services. I did attend, I have attended Finance Committee meeting, I've seen the School Committee go in and tell Finance that they were going to reduce positions, and then at the very next meeting I attended, I found that the only way to reduce positions is to add positions, which I didn't understand. I guess I just assumed that positions will be decreased by attrition or otherwise, and I'm concerned. I'm concerned for the well-being of the town, we get the complaints, people don't understand, I just don't have the money. It's not that we don't want to do the work, we just don't have the money to do it effectively. For that reason, I apologize to the public that are watching, and I certainly apologize to all of the departments, and we just can't be there when we have to be, but we certainly try. So to everyone that is here, I thank you for your attending, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to listen to all, and like I've told the school year after year after year, and I know you all remember, I'm staring at you, Mr. Becker, we've got to do this together, we all have to reduce, and that's the only way we're going to get through this. So, thank you, and hopefully this will be my last budget forum. Oh, and one other thing I'd like to say, because I think Lyndon brought it up, or Margaret did, for the most part, the majority part, the DPW is affiliated. It's very important to me, and I know it's important to the other department heads, that our unaffiliated classifieds do not get increases, and that support staff is so important to me, and I know it is to others, without them, we're sunk. I'm telling you, without them, I think all department heads don't generally go in every year and look for a raise themselves, they just wait, if there's money left over, so be it. Very important to me, as a department head for the DPW, that the support staff of all departments is taken care of because they're the backbone. Without them, we're sunk. Take my word for it, I appreciate them, and I appreciate all you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelleher. Is there any other department heads at this time that would like to talk, that are with us at this point? If not, we're going to continue to move on. At this time, we're going to talk about the special and annual town meeting, and I think the easiest way to handle this is we can, I just, I can read down Article 1, 2, etc., and give a general overview of it. If there's no questions or comments, we'll just continue to roll as quickly as we possibly can, but efficiently. So the special town meeting will be starting at 6:00 PM on May 12th, just to, so Article 1 on the special is going to be the snow and ice deficit, that's just to transfer some money, I believe. Article 2, unless you raise your hand or holler at me, I'm going to continue to move. Article 2 will be just unpaid bills of prior fiscal year, $2,272 to Verizon, sewer enterprise automation transfer, and that's a $26,000 number, sewer enterprise operating budget. Moving on to Article 4, unpaid bills prior fiscal year, sewer enterprise bills. Article 5, Glenwood School paved walkway project of $9,200 and $11,000, oh, there's three numbers here.
The total number is 11-7.
Total number is 11-7 for materials and labors to construct exterior paved walkways at the Glenwood School. Article 6, to see library computers, that'd be three desktop computers for the public library of $3,600. Article 7 will be the municipal parking area, and that is the primary building account of $38,000 onsite crushing materials for the public works, and I believe this is the parking area that's directly out here. And I believe that is all the motion for the special, and that will be happening at 6 o'clock on May 12th. Are there any questions on that one? Bearing none, we'll move on to the annual town meeting. The annual town meeting, first article as normal, will be to hear the annual reports of the town offices and committees, that's the normal protocol. Article 2, to see if the town will vote to fix salaries and compensation elected for town officials, that's a normal article as well. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to raise monies necessary to defray the expenses of the Southern County Regional Vocational School Assessment, as everyone had heard, that number's going to go up a little bit, but with fair notice from Southern Worcester County. Article 4, to see if the town will do it the same thing for Watchuset Regional School District, local minimum contribution, that's the normal protocol. Article 5, we'll see the Watchuset Regional School District Debt Services Assessment. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to raise a sum of money that may be to defray the expenses of the Watchuset Regional Transportation Assessment. Article 7, to see if the town will vote to raise monies necessary to defray the expenses of Watchuset Regional School District Operation Assessment.
Can I?
Absolutely. Please state your name and address at that mic, this is mine now.
Okay.
Ah, go ahead, you can talk.
I just want to give background, because obviously, this is right, this is the one, when we get to town meeting, this is the one, this is the article, and year after year, we try different things, and we see people in the audience getting a little bit confused, so you should know what's going to be happening this year, and you know, Joe had asked the question, and Margaret touched on it, and Lyndon can certainly speak more to it. We have a number from the Watchuset School Committee, that number will be presented. It will then be amended down to the number that was discussed by Margaret, which is that delta number that we need in order to fund the budget that you're looking at, which is not the contingent, it's the one that everybody wants. It's the one that they were able to get that close, that's the delta that was left, with everything that Margaret did, searching under couch cushions, the whole nine yards. So there will be a motion for the original budget number as presented by the School Committee, and a motion to amend it down. I should say, and again, you can see some of these numbers, we already know from the House budget that a portion of that money, should the budget continue to go in the direction that it's going, the school will see that money back. It might see the entire amount back depending on where the Senate budget goes. We obviously don't know any of this for sure, we won't know it until the governor signs the budget. We also need to know something, and this is a very important thing to know, should we pass the amended number, we technically will have failed the budget, and that sounds a little scary, and we should know right now. Sterling, Sterling just passed the budget 45 minutes ago. Paxton is headed there now, but Paxton's budget is predicated on an override vote that's going to come next Monday, along with all of our other elections for the five towns. If we fail the budget, however, which we've done before, and presented the School District with another number, the School Committee can then go back, they can choose to not accept our number, they can choose to come up with a whole other number, or they could choose to accept our number. It has happened before, we've seen it happen. In some cases, it's an easier battle for them, in particular, if they also think that the state is going to come through for them, and then that delta will then be put together and made whole by the state. It's going to put everybody in a good position, it sounds, you know, again, rose-colored glasses, that is our best-case scenario, but again, you need to know that. So presentation of the number from the School Committee, a motion to amend it, should the amendment pass, it technically means the budget fails, but that we have given them a number that we wanted, so they will go back and have to take action from that.
Same subject?
Just have one thing to say, and that was misstated, the budget, that if the amendment passes, it is not what the department heads need, it's what the budgets have already been cut to get to the recommended budget. It's not what they need. Sheila stated that it's what the departments need, it's not. They've all been cut drastically, so the contingent just means even more. So I want everyone here and anyone listening to know, these budgets get cut every year, more and more, so that's just what needs to be said. I can't see you.
Any other questions or comments in regard to?
Michelle Van Reed again, Charrick Hill Road. And I know it's too late because this has already been put out as far as the order of the articles that we're going to be voting on, but we should also consider maybe putting the school budget last so that people have to stay and look at what the whole town, I'm dead serious, I'm not being sarcastic at all, but if people have to stay and figure out how we're going to pave our roads, and how we're going to pay for the police and the fire department and everything else, and then we get to the school budget, I think there's a more vested interest, so that's my two cents for the future, if it hasn't happened yet, but I wish we would do that so that it would force people to stay for the whole meeting.
Any other questions or comments on Article 7? Moving on to Article 8, to see if the town will vote to raise such funds of money may be necessary to defray the expense of the municipal departments. Article 9, to see if the town will vote and raise money to defray the debt services. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate money for the water department for the fiscal year. Article 11, to see if the town will raise to appropriate, to operate the sewer department. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money from the PEG Access Cable Related Fund. Article 13, see if the town will vote appropriate of $516,000 for the capital equipment building And that also includes, no, that's where it includes some numbers that you have in front, if you have any questions. Article 14, we'll see the town will vote to appropriate a sum of $24,500, complete set of firefighter turnout gear for the fire department. Article 15, this is the Watchuset Greenways, to appropriate $1,000 from available funds for Greenway Maintenance. You can talk here if you'd like, be like Sheila. I mean...
Okay, I'll just try to be like me, okay?
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, so Colleen Abrams, and I'm from Holden, and someone said, "You're not from Rutland," when I was leaving his house today, and I said, "Right, but we're a regional effort, and we've been working on the Mass Central Rail Trail for 23 years." Going to make it really short, some of you know what we've been doing, some of you have been enjoying the Mass Central Rail Trail, and for some, it is new. Our annual, we're all volunteer, we have about 200 volunteers working each year, school groups, college groups, community folks, really sharing their labors, cleaning ditches, mowing, removing dead trees, and keeping that rail trail open between Sterling and Barry. You're right in the middle, you're in the heart of the Commonwealth here, and Rutland has the longest section of trail. And from the beginning, it's been a collaborative effort of the towns, the state government, some businesses, some foundations, and lots of individuals, getting stronger, sorry, we've been looking at stuff. So our annual budget for operations is about $35,000, and what we're asking for is about $1,000 from each town, which covers about a quarter of the annual budget. That annual budget, Margaret said, be specific and be for Rutland. We are so for Rutland, and we're so for the whole entity from Sterling to Barry, and sometimes a town will say, "Well, I'm only going to pay for the porta potty in my town," but that doesn't really help our efforts. We cover the needs across this 30-mile territory, 20 miles of which we've completed, did I say that already? We cover those needs regardless of which town, regardless of which town volunteers are from. We have volunteers from all over, we have members from 100 towns and from 17 states. We are reaching nearly 1,000 members, but it's still not enough. That provides about 28, 29,000 of our needed $35,000 to $40,000 budget, and so we're asking each town to give 1,000. It covers portable toilets, covers basic maintenance, insurance, so that hopefully we're protected from all the kinds of heavy work that we're doing. It doesn't cover construction costs, that's totally separate. We have sought out several hundred thousand dollars just for the capital improvements on this rail trail in this, just in the town of Rutland. Last, end with a story, I'm way over, sorry. Okay, the story is, we just met someone from Connecticut on the rail trail, and they said, "Oh, we just moved here." Maybe it's in one of those new houses, I don't know, but, "Oh, we just moved here, we love the trail," and they saw the picture in the landmark that they put in the cross box at the entrance to the Mass Central Rail Trail, and said, "Come to the annual meeting." And so these people said, "Yes, we will consider joining you. We believe that this is, $1,000 is a tremendous value to each town as a place for people of all ages to go out and walk, or ride your bike, or bring your grandchildren, or bring your grandmother, or just walk with a friend." The walk and talk, hold hands, it's good to hold hands, walk and talk is probably the best feature of the Mass Central Rail Trail. I'll hold your hand. I know.
I can't walk with you, Colleen, but I try, so, thank you. Any other questions or comments on the Greenways Trail?
Article 10, to raise a sum of money, but I didn't hear one mouth.
Article 10, it's not in the piece of paper that I'm reading, I have to go to my motion, my motion second, please hold. Margaret, can you help me?
It's long.
Article 10, total motion, thank you, Margaret, 666,000. Do you want the exact number, or is that close enough?
Close enough.
Okay, sorry, sorry about that, but thank you. Any other questions or comments on the Greenway? Moving on to Article 16, Rutland Heights site readiness of $35,000 to fund engineering, site studies, marketing, legal, other works.
Rachel Dolan Ware Road, going to bring this up to this evening, so maybe it won't have to be brought up on town meeting floor. During a Finance Committee meeting back in February, I heard something very disturbing concerning lack of being able to find the paperwork for the cleanup of the Rutland Heights property, which nobody seemed to know where it was. Second, there's a two-acre dump on that property that was questioned, that it was supposed to be tested on a yearly basis for a minimum of 20 years with an estimated cost of $6,000, which nobody seems to know whether the state ever did it before we took title to. which nobody seems to know whether the state ever did it before we took title to the property. Doesn't seem to appear that it's been being done since we took title, since it's, the costs aren't associated anywhere. So if that's going to need to be done, that's about $120,000 additional to the ticket price of that property. And I think the townspeople need to understand this. Maybe it's been rectified, but part of the deal of purchasing that property as it was presented to the taxpayers was that the state was going to remediate and clean that property. So, I would like that question to answered, and if nobody can answer that here tonight, I will bring it up at town meeting, because I think it is important that the taxpayers understand that we've had title to this property for many years. I know I'm not signing up to pay an additional $120,000, and that's minimal, for the cleanup of that property, when that was not what was presented to us taxpayers when we voted to take this property on. So if there's anybody who can clarify that, it was an RDIC member who was speaking at, I believe it was the February 13 Finance Committee, and I found that shocking. And I would think the taxpayers of this town would also. Thank you.
Gary, Margaret, Mr. Williams, someone?
All I can say, to the best of my knowledge, DEP has been on top of the situation of the dump, the two acres, brown field. It's been taken care of. There was a question of mowing and make sure there are no roots started into the thing. That has been taken care of. What they're doing here is, this is something that we have to line in case somebody comes in tomorrow, looking for a piece. We need to have the lots verified, all the culverts, all the water, you know, the different streams that are in there, verified where they are on the map, so we can lay it out. But as far as, this is something I had not heard, that there was a problem. DEP was okay with what was done in that dump site, to my knowledge. I wasn't around.
I reiterate, this was spoken at a finance committee meeting, which was televised, and Mr. Briggs was the one who brought it up to the finance committee. So, if you're on the committee and you have no knowledge of this, that makes it even more important why I brought it up. Thank you.
I will not dare speak for RDIC. But what I do know is that they have, they have spent some of the money that was appropriated last year to Weston and Sampson. Weston and Sampson is doing a document and data gathering thing. I would think that that'd be done by now, but I can't answer that. So, I'll be sure to convey the information to the RDIC chair, so he's prepared to let you know where those documents stand.
Thank you. And the testing of the dump.
I've talked with, and I hate to talk to you with my back to you, Rachel, but I've talked to Mark Baldi, Regional Director of DEP, and I'm told that the Heights Site is in full compliance. There are maintenance issues that we as a town have to take care of, and that is, like Mr. Williams mentioned, it does have to be mowed and policed annually, and we do that. But according to Mark Baldi, Regional Director, the Heights Site is in full compliance. I've never heard what you stated, and I obviously wasn't at that meeting for 120,000.
Thank you for your clarification. I appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments on Article 16? Now, we'll move on to Article 17. This would be to the Naquadah Green Project Fund, for a total of $11,000. It would be the town portion of the parking lot repair for the early childhood Center District Office in Hold and Jefferson. Article 18, submitted by the Wachusett School District. It would be appropriate $148,000 for the town's proportion of a $600,000 turf field replacement at the Wachusett Regional School District. Margaret?
This article is subject to approval of a Prop. 2.5 Capital Expenditure Exclusion ballot question, which would be question 2 on the town election ballot. The estimated tax rate impact of this amount is .1744 cents on the thousand. And if you go on the town website and go to the link for Town Election, you can actually pull up a tax rate information sheet on both the debt exclusion and the capital exclusion. And you can also find tax rate impact calculator, so you can look at the exact assessed value of your house and take a look at what the estimated tax rate impact would be there.
Any other questions or comments? Moving on to Article 19. This is submitted by the Board of Assessors. MGL, Chapter 59, authorizing the Board of Assessors to grant real and personal property tax abatement up to 100%. Members of the Massachusetts National Guard and Reservists or active duty in foreign countries. Any questions or comments on that? Article 20 is submitted by the Board of Assessors as well. It will be MGL, Chapter 59, Section 4, Clause 41A, to increase the income gross receipts there threshold to eligible to $20,000 to a maximum allow income limit for the circuit-breaker state income tax for certain elderly, single, non-head-of-household flyers. She's nodding her head yes. Nobody else is asking questions. We're going to move on then. Article 21, submitted by the Board of Selectmen, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for, accept, and expend any grants or donations from the state and federal government. That's just a formality procedure. Article 22, Board of Selectmen, to vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter contracts for goods and services for the duration of the excess of three years and not more than 10 years. Article 23, by the Board of Selectmen, to move that the town vote to appropriate all funds which will become available in fiscal 19 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Highways, Chapter 90 money. Article 24, this is, finance will be making this, and this is for the spending limits of the revolving funds, as they have been in similar years. Recreation Department, 350. Board of Health, 45,000. Planning Board, 75,000. Recreation Department, 123. Animal Control, 5500. Any questions or comments there? Moving on to Article 25, to Marshfield Lease Agreement. Yes, Margaret?
So, you might remember this coming forward a few years ago. This is actually to authorize the Board to enter into a long-term lease agreement for recreation purposes at Marshfield, essentially the same purposes that the field is used for now. What we have to do this time is we have to issue an RFP in compliance with procurement law. So that RFP will be issued, and then this will give the Board the authorization to negotiate a contract.
Any questions or comments on that particular article? The next one's Article 26, is a planning board and bylaw subcommittee. Yes, absolutely.
I can speak to those.
Great. Go right ahead. Arrows 26 through 30 are more or less things that I don't necessarily understand from the votes in front of me.
I don't have my papers in order because I didn't pick up one of the agenda warrants when I walked in, so I'm just going to go. Okay, which one is first?
26.
Well, yeah, but what is it? Okay, the first one is. What if I just go through my pile of papers here? Thank you. The first one that I have is the membership requirement, and this is essentially just saying that appointed members, does not refer to elected boards, but that they must be registered voters of the town. And if you move out of town, then you're no longer on the board. Town employees, such as Margaret, can be a representative on a board, or a consultant on a board, but will not be a voting member. Excuse me. The next one I have is the Stretch Energy Code, which is part of the Green Communities Program. If this is passed, it will open up quite a bit of money and grants. Did you tell me it was 140,000 for the initial grant?
Yeah, I don't see that.
This is based on international codes, as well as national codes, which the town is pretty much required to follow anyway. It applies only to new construction. And what it is, it's an energy-saving, you know, the idea of it is to save energy, and it gives a choice, a menu of what the contractors can choose from to do this. So there's quite a bit of flexibility in it. And I know I've heard that one of the comments going around is that you can't have an oil burner in your house, but I've been told that, yes, you can. It's one of the choices on the list. Any other questions on Stretch? That's kind of a... Oh, yes, and there will be, what is it, D? Department of Energy and something, or Energy and Resources will have a program, which I've already seen at a Selectmen's meeting, and it's very informative and very well-done. So that will be at the town meeting. The third one that I have is some changes to the town meeting. The first one is to change it to the second Monday in May of every year. Changing the quorum from 10 people to 30. No limiting on debate. No person can speak more than twice without permission from the moderator. And the rest of it is pretty much standard that we have. I have one from the Finance Committee, which I don't know a lot about, and I think, did you make any major changes?
It's not dramatic changes.
That's what I thought.
You have the appointments to the moderator, but there's not anything.
That's what I thought. You may know that the town is in the middle of doing a codification of bylaws, so some of these that come up are just really clarifying language, and that's one of them. And the next, the last one is the accounting and collecting. Are you making any changes in that one particularly?
There is a change to the tax title area, so it allows for a payment grant.
Oh, okay.
For any of the tax titled items that are out there.
So if any more questions on any of these? Thank you.
Thank you very much on that. So that, what she just spoke about was all the way from 26 through 30, from what I understand. And moving on to 31 would be a citizen's petition in regards to strong chief for the Police Department, and that's a citizen's petition that has come forward. Any questions or comments on that?
Can someone explain that a little bit better, what we have?
Mr. Stillings, I believe you're a part of that. Would you like to speak on that?
Yes, sir. Jeff Stillings, Lord Lane. I had a role in generating the citizen petition for Article 31. So what this article requests, or the petition requests, is that the town adopt one of two statutory provisions that define the authorities that the townspeople want to give the chief of police. So according to the Massachusetts General Statute, Chapter 41, there are two types of police chiefs, one being the weak chief, one being the strong chief. Now, I spent some time today looking at the two, and they're very identical. They're very much the same when it comes to the job security of a chief. They both say that a chief cannot be fired without cause and after a hearing. They both say that a chief and the officers must be appointed or reappointed either for one to up to three years. Now, to summarize this in a nutshell, the difference between what we have now being a weak chief and what I am proposing, the strong chief, it all comes down to who sets the policy. Currently, if there is a policy for the Police Department, it's set by the Board of Selectmen. If we were to adopt and accept a strong chief, it allows that the police chief is the person who can set policy and regulation for the Police Department, and it gives the Board of Selectmen 30 days to accept it or forever hold their peace. It doesn't ask for any additional money. It's basically who gets to make the policy for the Police Department. Why did we generate the citizen petition? Because it's important to the Police Department. I actually spoke with the Police Association. It was one of their priorities. It's one of their requests that they wanted, because job security and protection for their chief was important to them, so.
But you just said that that didn't make a difference.
That's right. And if you started to break it down...
So just explain to us, I mean, I don't...
It all comes down to who gets to make the regulations for that department. That's what it comes down to. That's what I can...
Your comment, though, Jeff, and I'm just, I'm not a bitch, I'm a, even can't even make love. I don't understand what you're saying, when you said to me that they wanted to protect their chief, but yet there's no change in how the chief is protected.
And I'm forward with that. If you look at the two statutes, they're right next to each other. They're both under Chapter 41. One is 97, and the other one is 97A. The town gets to pick one or the other. Right now, it defaults to the weak chief. We've been under the weak chief. So, we are saying, it's 2018, it's a professionalized department. The strong chief appears to be more relevant in allowing a professional, full-time police chief to set the regulations, to set the policy that that department head wants, subject to 30 days review by the Board of Selectmen. And it's very subtle changes, but that's the change. So we're asking, and it can only be done at the annual town meeting, so that's also why the timing is for Saturday's vote. It's the only time that could be done.
I don't, I don't have an issue with it. I just, the way you just explained it is different from, what is the Police Department who wants it compared.
It was important to them when I talked to them. It was important to them when I talked to them, and it's doable as a citizen petition. It can only be done at the annual town meeting. It can only be approved by the townspeople themselves. This isn't a budgetary item. It's an authority item. I'm just saying that the chief should be able to control the policies of the department instead of the Board of Selectmen, so.
It doesn't matter. It's both, it's really just backed down to the Select Board, is what you're telling me.
Yeah. But the decision is up to the townspeople.
Correct. It still goes back to the Select Board.
Right now, the Select Board sets the policy for the department.
But you said it still goes back to the...
They have 30 days. They have 30 days to approve it. Yep, they have 30 days to prove it.
I'm not trying to be a pain here, Jeff. I just wanted to explain it, because I didn't understand it when I read both things, and I'm on the Finance Committee, and I just didn't understand the difference. And that's why I'm just trying to give a real explanation.
That's what I could tell by reading it and rereading it and looking it over. That seems to be the number-one difference is...
The chief is actually a citizen of the town, which if he thinks that that's something we should do, then I have no issue with. I just didn't understand the difference, because it's still the Select who takes the decision.
It's subtle. It's subtle.
Can you speak to the differences?
Yeah, I'll jump up when Jeff's up. Okay, I'm not... So I do support the citizen's petition. I actually had put in another article myself, but withdrew it because we didn't need to double up, obviously. So there's actually two differences between Chapter 97 and 97A, 97A, which is referred to as the strong chief law. The other, Jeff spoke about my ability to set policies and regulations. So to put that in a practical application, let's say, I got a policy binder that's probably about that thick, okay? A lot of those policies are five, 10 years old. They need to be gone through. They need to be fixed. They need to be, they need to match up with statutes. I got juvenile policies in there that don't even match up to juvenile law. It still says a juvenile is a 16-year-old. Now they're a 17-year-old. So it's stuff like that that I need to change, and it needs to be changed in a timely manner. And like you said, the Select Board does have 30 days... And like you said, the Select Board does have 30 days to review any proposed changes that I make, any new policies. So, it's basically, it's a checks and balance. So, I create the policies and regulations. They still have an opportunity to approve it and act on it. And the other difference is, in the strong chief law, the chief also has the right to assign. So, hypothetical situation, it would never happen, but let's say one day the Select Board said to me, "Chief, we don't think you need a night shift anymore. Shut down the night shift." And I'd have to do it. And obviously, you don't want me to shut down the night shift. I don't want to shut down the night shift, because it's not practical. So, that, the strong chief law gives the police chief the authority to make assignments, deploy officers in whatever manner is prudent, so. Questions?
Thank you. That explains it in a lot more detail than we would see in writing and everything else.
Yeah, well, it's just, yeah, the statute is, it's kind of hard to read it, and it's... I've done a little research into it, too.
I knew you would. That's why I wanted to relay it. Thank you.
Jeffrey, do you have a, this will be your second time to speak on this subject. No more, please.
Second call. I'll be brief. The other confusion is that the fire department proposed this in 1996. So, the wording for the citizen petition was basically verbatim from the fire department's 1996 request to the townspeople, basically crossing out the word "fire," writing in "police," crossing out the stat, there's a statute for the fire chief, crossing that out and writing in 41, Section 97A. However, when the legislatures for Massachusetts created the strong chief, strong fire chief option, they added a whole lot more authority in the fire chief's strong chief. So, it is almost apples and oranges, so it is often confused when you say "strong chief." The fire chief has a lot more authorities for promoting and hiring and things like that, so it is a little bit watered down on the police chief's side, so. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on Article 31? Sheila, did you? You're all set with what was just recently said. Article 32 is another citizen's petition to see if the town will vote to name the town building department office after a longtime building inspector, Harry Johnson. Relatively straightforward. And then Article 33 is just the appointments of the moderator, and as a ad campaign here at this time. This is, the finance position goes through the town moderator, and usually every year, we're on the hunt to refresh some new bodies there. And if anybody is interested in being on a finance board that you currently don't serve on another board, please come and see me and show some interest, and we can do that interview process and try to help you with the town finances, if you would. Are there any other questions or comments that will be come before us tonight on our pre-town meeting? Otherwise, I certainly thank everybody, the town officials, town administrator, for coming out tonight and helping with this meeting. Hopefully, it's made it a little bit easier. I certainly encourage everybody to come into our annual town meeting, which is Saturday night at Glenwood School at 6:00 PM is our special. Our annual town meeting is at 7:00 at Glenwood School as well. And then our town election would be one week from today. Polls are open from 8, excuse me, 7:00 to 8:00 PM. Please, as Addison would say, vote early and often, please. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Thank you.